On a seven to zero vote, the Board approved unpaid leave of absence for part-time classified staff member from nine twenty-two to ten fifteen this year, and I am unanimous in my report.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we will invite you all to stand and join us in an invocation to be led by Trustee Williams. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Trustee Fuentes.
Oh heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day in the beauty of South Orange County. We thank you for the employees of our district who serve the educational needs of our students, and we ask you to bless our nation and to bless and protect our citizens who are the uniform of our military around the world. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen, we have two resolutions to present. If the Chancellor will join me down at the podium, we will have the clerk read the presentations and the resolutions.
May I ask if Dr. James Wright is with us this evening? Dr. Wright, if you would join the President and the Chancellor. Ladies and gentlemen, a resolution honoring Dr. James Wright, the 2009 Administrator of the Year. Whereas Dr. James Wright, Dean of the Division of Mathematics, Science, and Engineering at Saddleback College, was named by Chancellor Ragupi Mather as the 2009 Outstanding Administrator of the Year. And whereas Dr. Wright is described by colleagues as being well-grounded, tactful, caring, always accessible, and a hard worker with integrity. And whereas Dr. Wright makes an effort to visit sick and injured employees, regularly comes in on Saturdays to check on classes, and fills in for absent instructors. And whereas Dr. Wright has been observed cleaning graffiti, pulling weeds, unlocking classrooms, posting signs, replacing water cooler bottles, cleaning storm drains, and quote, "anything else that needs to be done," unquote. And whereas during more than fifteen years at Saddleback College, Dr. Wright has dedicated many hours outside his regular duties to the Veterans Memorial, job fairs, demonstrations to youth groups, raising funds for student scholarships, the Basic Skills Initiative, and attending college events such as Parents' Night and football games. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Dr. James Wright upon his achievement and well-deserved recognition as the 2009 Outstanding Administrator of the Year, and I so move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Let me just say just a few words. I want to thank you. This is a humbling experience to be recognized. I want to thank particularly my faculty and staff in the Division of Science Engineering because they have given me continuous support over the past fifteen years, first as an instructor, then finally as the dean for the last eleven-plus years, and I thank them because they're wonderful people and they have really given me a lot of support. I want to thank my fellow deans and colleagues for all the support they've given me. I'm honored by this. Finally, my wife is here, and I want to thank her and express my love to her. Gee, we've been together for over forty-plus years, so we're very proud of that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dave.
I just want to say that, you know, I have the pleasure right now of serving with Jim on the Accreditation Committee at Saddleback, and obviously I've known him for a lot of years, and there's just no finer academic administrator gentleman than Jim Wright. You are a treasure to this district. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Jim Gaston with us?
Yes.
Please. Mr. Gaston, if you would join the President and the Chancellor. A resolution honoring Jim Gaston, the 2009 Outstanding Manager of the Year. Whereas Jim Gaston, the Associate Director of Academic Systems and Special Projects of the District Information Technology Department, was named by Chancellor Ragupi Mather as the 2009 Outstanding Manager of the Year. And whereas Jim Gaston is viewed as a role model by colleagues and known for having an unwaveringly positive attitude, quick wit, and the ability to think outside the box. And whereas Jim Gaston has shown extraordinary initiative as a presenter at regional, state, and national conferences, and has been honored with many awards individually and as a part of a team, including prestigious recognition from the California State Chancellor's office. And whereas though Jim Gaston's, through Jim Gaston's passionate encouragement of fellow staff members, over forty-five families have been adopted during the holidays over the past eight years and presented with food and toys. And whereas while serving for more than twenty-one years in District IT, Jim Gaston's dedication, leadership, and teamwork have contributed to the establishment of our district as a leader in innovative technology development. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Jim Gaston upon his achievement and well-deserved recognition as the 2009 Outstanding Manager of the Year. I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Student Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Well, I really appreciate this. This is really a special honor. It's made even more special, like Jim Wright. My family's here tonight. I'm a bit of a newlywed compared to him. I've only been married twenty-six years to my wife, Lee, and she deserves the applause for that, not me. My daughter Kayla and my son Kevin are also here tonight, so it makes it even more special. I also really want to thank the Chancellor and the Board because the innovation that was mentioned in that resolution is only possible because of your support for us. We could come up with all the greatest ideas in the world without the resources to make those ideas a reality. They would simply remain on the whiteboard. But I would really be remiss if I didn't recognize the incredible team that I'm on in District IT, both staff and with our consultants, under the very able and visionary leadership now of Dr. Bob Bramucci. It really is a remarkable team of people, and please understand that if you talk to anyone who knows me well and ask to describe me, the word modest would not pop up in the conversation. Ask my family about that. But I truly and honestly believe I get far more credit than I deserve because my role on the team is a very visible one. But we have some people here that have roles that aren't as visible, and it's their talent, dedication to excellence, and really commitment to our students that really makes District IT a remarkable place to work.
Our next item is a film presentation regard, from the IVC Foundation, and let me have
Many of them perform a role that is nowhere near as visible as mine. You'll never see them, but without them, this place would not work.
the Chancellor introduce this item.
They keep the network and servers running.
Thank you.
They're on call twenty-four by seven.
Yes, Irvine Valley College Foundation has produced a short video on its fundraising
They perform those tasks off-hours without prompting or complaining.
efforts. We would like to play it for you at this time.
They produce an enormous number of programs and reports, some of them not all that exciting
It's about five to six minutes long.
as some of the stuff that gets the visibility, but very necessary to the function of the district. They support the user community with patience and tact. They make sure the bills are paid and the contracts are signed. And to top it all off, without exception, they're genuinely nice people that make it a joy and a pleasure to come into work, and some of them are here tonight, and so I'd really like them to stand and to be recognized for the excellent work they do, so that District IT staff and consultants, if you could stand now, I'd really appreciate it. So on behalf of all of them, thank you very much for this recognition. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you, and thank you to the Foundation, Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Chancellor, I want to say thank you very much. I had requested that this be agendized, and I so appreciate that it's shared today. I want to congratulate Glenn and the team at IVC on this wonderful presentation. I know what a hands-on involvement Dave Robinson had in this, and I hope you might speak to that, Glenn. I find this particular presentation something very useful for all of us because we can send this as a big email to friends and get them involved. I want to tell you that this morning I started my day at seven o'clock in the morning over at UCI getting my blood draw that I do as a follow-up for my liver transplant, and there was a gentleman sitting next to me, an older gentleman, and he had a big book he was reading, and I asked him, I said, "Reading anything good?" And he says, "Oh, yes, it's very worthwhile." He says, "Of course, everything you read is good so long as you keep learning and keep your mind going." That was all the conversation we had. I just saw him in the photographs here in this presentation. He was an IVC student, and what a message, what a message. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are to the Public Comments Section of the Evening Festivities, and I have only one request to speak. That is from Professor Cosgrove, and so without further ado, Professor Cosgrove.
And I'll keep it under two minutes. Bob Cosgrove, Saddleback Senate, faculty member here at Saddleback also. The Board policy, Administrative Regulation Committee, which is your committee, has done a lot of work on many policies over the years and many ARs, one of which has become quite intense on our campus, is the smoking issue. And this committee has discussed the matter, its implications and consequences, and brought forward a recommendation that we believe would be a good recommendation for both colleges and would like you to consider it and discuss it before passing judgment on it. Currently, smokers may smoke on campuses, but one of the questions that kept coming up was, do smokers have a right to smoke in the presence of others, some of whom are very sensitive to secondhand smoke? Having watched my father die of emphysema, I understand some of the implications on a personal level. You have before you two pieces of material. One is Tobacco 101, which is a presentation that I hope you will read through. The other is a list of some sixty colleges and universities in California that have various smoke-free or smoke-only in designated areas, and more are coming each day. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor, and I understand that the information has been given to us, but there is not for our consideration tonight, that smoking policy, so we will give it consideration when it comes here, but it is not in front of us tonight. I also want to take a second to turn to President Burnett. I understand we have a number of special guests in the audience, and I call upon him, if he would be so kind as to come forward and introduce them to us.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am very pleased. Oops, sorry. Well, we'll leave that on for now. Very excited right now. We have some extremely special guests with us here tonight, and Saddleback College wanted to introduce them to our Board of Trustees as well as to the general public that's watching our cable channel tonight. As you may be aware, we are very thrilled to have with us this year sixteen students from Egypt at Saddleback College doing their higher education. This is done through the Egypt Community College Initiative Program that was just started this year through the State Chancellor's Office and through our Foundation for California Community Colleges. It actually is with the Fulbright Commission. If you recall, the Fulbright Commission is the bi-national, Fulbright Commission was established in Egypt in nineteen forty-nine and is the oldest and largest Fulbright program in the Arab world. Since nineteen forty-nine, nearly five thousand scholars have been American Fulbrighters in Egypt or Egyptian Fulbrighters in the United States. The California Community Colleges Initiative for Egypt provides participants from Egypt with opportunities for study and professional development. The program promotes respect for cultural diversity and creates opportunities to learn about the United States. Once again, I mentioned that the California CCI Egypt program is funded by the United States Department of State and once again implemented by our Foundation for California Community Colleges. Well, let's cut to the chase. We're thrilled to have with us our wonderful students at Saddleback College. I've had several times to meet them, and before I start, I did want to recognize Lisa Telson and Daniel Spillman have worked so hard on this program and making them feel welcome and getting it off the ground. Thank you, Lisa and Daniel. I should mention also Barba Sandaba and Cholay Alizadeh have also been very instrumental in this. So real quick without, if you don't mind, students, if you mind standing up when I call your name, when I call your name. And please forgive me, I am not the best on languages, so I probably should have my Rajan up here doing it, but I here and getting the opportunity. So our first student with us here tonight is Walid Ahmad. Our second student is Zenat Ahmed. Next student is Karim Ali. Oh, nope, in class. By the way, all the rest of the students that aren't here tonight are in class. Next student is Amir Amen. Amir, and if you notice, he's holding up the Egyptian flag. Thank you, Amir. Next student is Hanan Badawi. Ahmed Abraham. Oh, hey, what are you doing over there? He's separated. Amro Mansour. Ahmed Mohammed. Khalid Nas. Mahmoud Sayed. No, in class two. And finally, Al Taha. Anyway, we're very proud of having this program. We're one of the first colleges to do this, and we actually have the largest contingency, I believe, of students from Egypt out of the, I believe, twenty or so community colleges that are sponsoring students this year. So thank you very much.
See, Todd, I think you may have missed some folks.
Oh, who did I miss?
So if they'd like to introduce themselves, why don't they?
What's your name?
Which one? Which one?
Wahid Ali.
Oh, right here. Wahid Ali, everybody. Wahid Ali. I just read a script.
Trustee Milchiker.
I just want to say that I got to know these students when, in my Spanish class, when we took a field trip into Santa Ana into the Bowers Museum, and they're an extraordinarily fine group of students, and I really got a really good opportunity to know them, and they really are really fine students and excellent students. Many of them are engineering students, very bright, and we're really happy to host you here at Saddleback College and hope you feel welcome here. Thank you so much.
Welcome and thank you, President Burnett, and the ones that aren't here in class. That's what my kids tell me all the time, too. Yeah, yeah, sure. Welcome, thank you. All right, we are to the Board Reports, and as always, I will turn to Trustee Jay to lead us on.
Yes, I'd like to mention another thing about Dr. Jim Wright. He spent how many years in the Air Force, Jim?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, and I believe you were a full Colonel and also a professor at the Air Force Academy for many years. And I just want to thank you for your service, both in the Air Force and obviously here in this district and specifically at Saddleback College. Thank you, Jim.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, I would like to echo that. Jim Wright is an honorable man, someone I truly respect, and you most deservedly do deserve the award. My report will be brief. I attended the IVC ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Business and Science Building. I also attended the Orange County School Board Teacher Award Ceremony where our own instructor, Professor Larry Perez, was awarded Community College Instructor of the Year for the entire county. What a great honor. And I also attended the Saddleback College Football Game. In addition, I've been out trying to scare up donations for our gala at Saddleback College that's coming up November seventh, and we'll have one at IVC not too far off, too. Thank you.
Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting from the Orange County Community Colleges Legislative Task Force, we had a rather brief meeting in October. The task force finalized changes to our mission, representation, and procedures of the task force, and discussed the state policy priorities for this legislative season. And it was also agreed that we will host our annual breakfast for legislators or other type event to host and be with our Orange County legislators during the spring of two thousand and ten. For my own report, I would like to thank President Rockmore and his entire community at IVC for their gracious hospitality. I enjoyed very much the ribbon-cutting and formal dedication of the new building, and it was a splendid afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Williams.
I'll, I will try to be brief. There are a number of items to report on. A couple of them have been touched already. First, had an opportunity to attend the dedication of the Business Science and Technology Building, and like Trustee Fuentes, want to offer my congratulations to President Rock- Building, and like trustee Fuentes, want to offer my congratulations to President Rockmore and his team and everybody who had a hand in putting that fine facility together and that fine ceremony. In addition, with trustee Padberg, I attended the Teacher of the Year Ceremony at the Disneyland Hotel, and we have already congratulated Larry Perez for his fine accomplishment, but it certainly bears repeating. He was there that night. He was in fine form that night. We saw a nice presentation about the work he does in the classroom, and he is truly to be saluted as a fine and very inspirational teacher. In addition, we just saw a presentation regarding the IVC Foundation. A couple of weeks ago, there was a fundraising event at the Performing Arts Center put on by the IVC Foundation, and I had an opportunity to attend. I thought it was a wonderful event and extraordinarily well-done. Hats off again to Glenn, to Dave Robinson, to the entire Foundation Board for a nice event and getting the community involved. And finally, on the subject of foundations, as trustee Padberg has said, and it feels, when I go late, I follow a lot of comments that have already been made, but to let the community know, this coming Saturday, there is a foundation event on behalf of the Saddleback College Foundation. Information can be found on the website. We would encourage all of you to participate in that. These foundations do excellent work on behalf of our students, and they are really a marvelous vehicle to get involved with colleges and get involved in the lives of some very worthy students. And finally, my thanks to trustees Milchek and Williams, who with me attended an audit committee meeting earlier this afternoon. We have a report from our auditors due at the next meeting, but suffice it to say, the preview today was quite good, and thanks to Gary Portner and his entire staff for the hard work they've done to get our books in good shape. I am through. Let me turn now to trustee Padberg.
Thank you.
Trustee Milchek, excuse me.
They forget so quickly.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Trustee Padberg wanted to say something, and I saw it there.
I just wanted to follow up. I forgot to mention, since we were talking about foundations, Professor Perez very generously donated $10,000 of his $15,000 prize money to Saddleback College Foundation for scholarships.
Very good catch, and thank you. All right. Trustee Milchek.
That just shows how extraordinary our staff and our faculty and all of our staff are at the district and at the colleges, and I thank all of you for all of your hard work. I want to also congratulate Dr. Wright. I've known him for many years, and I believe this is your second career here, and you're doing an extraordinary job, and I found out some of the extra things that you do for the college, and thank you so much. You're really an outstanding individual. I also want to congratulate Jim Gaston. I've known him for many years, and he's really, they're both extraordinary employees, and just, we're very proud to have them here at the district. I also want to, I also want to mention the Business Science and Innovation Center dedication at Irvine Valley College. It's a, it's a really interesting building, and we took, we had the opportunity to take a tour of the building, and it's really extraordinary also because they, it's, it's all set up for innovation. So the whole building is built as an innovative building. It's interesting looking, and as you go inside of it, there's many, many angles inside the building and many touches that make it look modern, and the whole thing works really well together. And the whole building is incredibly modular inside so that it can be used for many different purposes, and the main things that are taught in the building are business science and computer, and the whole theme of the building really works well with the form and the function, as Marshall McEwen said, work well together. And I would recommend anyone to take a tour of this building and to see how well it works and to take some computer classes. Many, many different computer classes are being offered at the building, and you'll be ready for a job now in the community if you take some of these computer classes. So I thank Dr. Rockmore and everyone else who was involved with this dedication of the building and the ribbon-cutting. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Thank you, President Wagner. First, you know, again, I just want to echo some of the remarks that trustee Milchek made, that tonight we have honored two of our best and brightest. I've spoken to Dr. Wright. Jim Gaston is certainly one of the most technically savvy, innovative, and fun people that we have in this district, and it's really a pleasure to honor, honor you both tonight. Just a couple of remarks in thinking about a few issues. I am a little concerned about the shrinking pool of basic aid funds that are available to support our long-term capital infrastructure projects, and I see a bit of straying from some of our guidelines that we've established for ourself in terms of using basic aid dollars. And I think it's really high time that we had a focused discussion on this subject to deal with it. I think, you know, we need to be concerned about, you know, direction we may be going, funding additional enrollment perhaps over cap, speaking to the different needs that our colleges have in terms of, obviously, an aging campus infrastructure here at Saddleback, other needs that we have at Irvine Valley College, should there be perhaps some sort of a match in terms of scheduled maintenance, rather than all of those dollars coming out of basic aid. I think there's a whole host of different subjects that this opens up. I think it would make some very good lively discussion, and the chancellor has asked us for direction in this area. I think it's incumbent upon us to give that to him. I've also asked informally to provide some information to us regarding how our articulation agreements are working with respect to our transfer students. I'm reading articles in the press regarding difficulty that students are having in terms of getting classes, in terms of being accepted once they graduate from here, and I think that's important information that we need to have. So I know that, you know, he'll, he'll be working to provide information about that. So that's all I have in my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Bailey.
My report is brief. I attended the SC Beach Retreat as well, I'm sorry, no, the SC Homecoming and the ASG Beach Retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. Three things I'd like to report on. One, it was a pleasure for me as well to attend Teacher of the Year Awards Program at the Disneyland Hotel last Friday evening. It was sponsored by the Orange County Department of Education. Two of our professors were honored there, one of course was our Saddleback College Math Professor, Larry Perez. As it has been mentioned, he was selected to be the Outstanding Community College Professor of the Year in Orange County, and also from Irvine Valley College, Badminton Professor, Martin McGrogan, was also recognized as Teacher of the Year from Irvine Valley College. Secondly, as it has been mentioned, I was delighted to see the dedication of the IVC Business Science and Technology Innovation Center building. As it has been noted, it's a wonderful, wonderful learning center for the, for these students for many, many years to come. And thirdly, trustee Padberg and trustee Williams and Milchek and I had a chance to participate. That is something that I've never done, and I was participate in a fashion show sponsored by Laguna Village Republican Club last week. It was fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any board requests for reports?
None in writing.
Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm usually not one to speak at this agenda item, requests for report, but today I do have one, and it actually follows in the theme of trustee Lang's comments to the board just a couple of minutes ago. I'd like to bring to the attention of the board an item. Last month, we approved basic aid funding for the scheduled maintenance needs of Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. I'd like to see us make optimum use of our basic aid dollars, particularly in consideration of the tough state budget situation and our shrinking basic aid dollars. Since both colleges have received increased budget allocations this year due to enrollment growth, I'd like to see a matching requirement considered for scheduled maintenance requests. I understand that historically, the state as well as our own board has required a match for scheduled maintenance projects. So as one who voted with the majority when this matter was last before us, I'd like to move this evening that this item be returned to us for reconsideration and with the review and recommendation of the chancellor regarding how best to address the matter of use of some of our college general funds in this context. And I so move.
Second that motion. It's appropriate.
Well, actually, I have a procedural question. This is a board request for report. You're not asking for a report, you're asking for a reconsideration of a prior item, correct? Or do you want it in the form of a report, and then we'll agendize a reconsideration?
I think we want a lot of information before we move it, so that's why I was bringing it up in the context of request.
Okay, then, then let's consider it as a request for report. We'll get an, we'll get, next month?
Yeah.
Okay, next month, we'll get the information and can agendize, so at least we've complied with the Brown Act, the possibility of a reconsideration based upon that information. So with that understanding, trustee Padberg.
Yes, I just want to make one comment, that for projects that we have approved and are underway, it would be unfair to pull the plug on them and then have to start with a brand-new sort of agenda for them. So that hopefully can be addressed in the report, and I will certainly do that.
All right. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carries unanimously. All right. Any further requests for report? All right, we are at item 4.1, which is our monthly discussion item, and up for consideration tonight is the Veterans Outreach Program. And let me start with chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. Yes, the discussion topic for this month's board meeting is indeed Veterans Outreach Programs at Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College. As I call upon Vice Chancellor Bob Bermuda to introduce the topic briefly, as well as the speakers, I've also asked the college presidents to be available near the podium to assist with answering any questions that the board members may have. Vice Chancellor Bermuda.
Thank you, chancellor. In places like Lexington and Concord, they fought for our freedom. At places like Bull Run and Gettysburg, they fought to extend freedoms to those among us who had been excluded. In places like Bellow Wood, Ypres, Normandy, the Ardennes, they fought to extend freedom to others. They have served in places with names like Incheon, Khe Sanh, and tonight, they serve in places with names like Basra, Fallujah, Kabul, and Kandahar. They're our veterans, and tonight, we're here to learn how our colleges serve those who have served us, beginning with Saddleback College.
Board members, Chancellor Mather, thank you for inviting us here today to speak about an important subject, how we support our student veterans on each of our prospective campuses. Saddleback College, we offer an innovative approach to a student services program. It's far more than just veterans outreach and the processing of educational benefits. I have packets there showing, you know, some of the highlights of our program, if you want to look through them while I'm presenting. Before I speak of our specific services in our Veterans Education and Transition Services Program, or Vets for short, I want to speak about the students that we serve. In the Vets Program, there are three different categories of students. One, the specific veterans and active military, another category, as well as their family members. Most institutions assess the amount of veterans that they serve by looking at the VA benefit recipients, and that is, it's a bit short-sighted, as the group is far larger, but if we do look at our VA benefit recipients, we're looking at 260 recipients currently. It's the second highest veterans population among all Orange County community colleges, and we're growing by leaps and bounds. The profile of our student veterans, most of our student veterans that are coming back are under the post-9/11 GI Bill. They've actually served in theater in Operation Iraqi Freedom or Operation Enduring Freedom. And this profile is a bit different than most community colleges because of our proximity to Camp Pendleton, so we have a high number of Marine infantrymen from North Base coming up to our institution. So it's a little bit different of a student veteran profile. I want to speak about a couple items with these, this student population. One is very high level of maturity, very mission-driven. We see very high achievement in the classroom. Another item is, according to the RAND Corporation, about 40% of these combat veterans are coming back with cognitive disabilities. We also see mobility challenges as well. So we see a high level of reentry, readjustment, and transitional issues that we're working with at our college level. Community colleges are the kind of funnel where a lot of veterans come to school. In California, among VA benefit recipients, statewide, 67% of benefit recipients are going to community colleges. It's the entry point, so. Our mission in the Vets Program is really to focus on those three groups, the veterans, active military, and their family members, their academic and career goals, but also the transitional issues coming back into civilian life. And that's, that's kind of a different component from community colleges as we welcome them back into our community. We have a vision of becoming the model program in post-secondary education. And at Saddleback College, we have taken several efforts far beyond our peers. The services that our Vets Program, the college, offers are four components. I have Tony Bilott to come and speak about our Veterans Outreach Program. We have our Vet Center, one of the few community colleges that offers set aside space for our veterans within a vet center. We have several on- and off-campus partners. We run a very efficient program where we make use of existing services rather than duplicating services within our center. And lastly is our Student Payment and Veteran Services Office, who really administer those educational benefits. So let me turn it over to Tony.
Thanks for having me. Like Terrence said, my name is Tony Bilott. I'm a Saddleback College student currently, going full-time, hoping to transfer to Chapman University. I served in the Marines for four years and deployed to Iraq twice, first time in the invasion, second time in, for the Battle of Fallujah. Basically, what I do is I'm the Veterans Outreach Aid, and so I put a face with our program with respect to the veterans on campus. Our Vets Outreach Program is driven by peer involvement and volunteerism and simply vets donating a lot at their time. I work with several outside organizations such as AMVETS, the VA, and Camp Pendleton's educational services to make adjusting to college life a little bit easier for veterans on campus. As far as accessibility, we do have the virtual means, which is our really great website, and we've tapped into Facebook and MySpace to make the social networking, which is prevalent all over now, for the veterans to use. November, we're going to be hosting a Veterans Outreach Resource Fair, and we're bringing together 30-plus organizations to come onto campus to showcase what they do for veterans. Some of that information is going to be in your packet. It's the colorful one with the different insignias of the service. Sorry. Back to it? Our memorial on campus signifies to veterans that Saddleback is committed to making their campus veteran-friendly, and for a lot of veterans returning back, they need that reassurance. So that's all I have to say.
I do want to recognize someone while we're on the Veterans Memorial in the crowd. I want to recognize Marty Samuel, who's heading our, thank you, Marty. He's heading our efforts for fundraising to, for the completion of the Veterans Memorial. It's one-of-a-kind. It's kind of the jewel of our campus. Getting into the Vet Center, specifically what the Vet Center offers, we do have a veterans-specific counselor that's housed in there. One of the innovative approaches is we have a boots-to-books transitions course. It's actually an Applied Psych 140 course, Personal Growth and Development, kind of an intro-to-college course that covers that full curriculum, but there's layered components on readjustment and those services out in the community. on readjustment and those services out in the community. So it's, in the fall is the first time we've offered it, very, very popular course. We actually have, you know, a girlfriend and a wife of an active military member in that course to see what their significant other is going to be challenging on the way back. So. Another item is that Tony spoke to, student veterans and volunteers are really kind of the heart of this program. We've had an outpouring of assistance from our community. Lastly, our Veterans Club, over 40 members. It's really great. It's really taken off. Our partners, internal and external, again, I said, we do not want to duplicate services within our program, so we're using several programs on campus to help us out, specifically DSPS. We have a lot of traumatic brain injuries coming back, and our DSPS program has been great. It's very nice. I oversee that program as well. It's a nice little segue for our veterans to kind of take away the stigma of uses, use of that services. The external partners, Tony spoke to this briefly, but we do bring our external partners into our Vet Center. OC Vet Center, who provides counseling therapy, they've seen that we have such an increase on veterans on our campus that they're actually moving to Crown Valley and Marguerite to put up shop there and going to help us with working with North Base and then dealing with those transitional issues where, when the categorical funds are diminished for some of our programs, they can offset that with providing some of that counseling therapy, which is, which is great. AMVETS, we have a service officer in our facility once a week. Student Payment Office and Veteran Service Office, they basically administer our educational, VA educational benefits. They provide education across campus about what the post-9/11 GI Bill can offer, and, you know, I see them as a step in reintegration. It's basically the wallet. It's helping with those benefits. So the great thing about this, Carol Hilton has staffed this facility with all military veterans, so they, again, have a common bond with the students coming in. We have worked with Daryl at IVC, and we have a great inter-district partnership, as well as we've created a Region Eight Veterans Program Directors Consortium to share best practices and advocate for veterans. We have several future goals, a mentorship program. We do want to be the number-one veteran-serving institution in Orange County. With our proximity to Camp Pendleton, we should be, and we're making strides to do so. Also, looking at private donors, possibly an upward-bound program, but other grant-funded opportunities to support our program. And lastly, I just want to leave with our program motto, and thank you for giving us your time, but our program motto is serving those who have served us, and that's what we're truly here for. So. If I can hand it over to Daryl.
Daryl, Daryl, before you start, hang on just a moment. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I really appreciate your presentation of the program. I just would like you to please introduce yourself and state what your title is. I don't, I think you missed that unless I missed something. And I think I know who you are, but I think it'd be good for other people to know.
I apologize. It was on the first slide. I didn't say it. Terrence Nelson, I'm the Assistant Dean of Counseling and Special Programs and the Vets Director. And this is Tony Belot. He's our Veterans Outreach Aid slash mentor of the program.
That's all.
Trustee Milchiker.
I just wanted to mention, I was at the open house of the Veterans Outreach Program, and I mentioned at the board meeting, I was incredibly impressed by all the volunteers that were vets, that were staffing the program. Also, when you mentioned that you are also working with DSPNS, our Disabled Student Program, so that there isn't a stigma of some of the returning vets of attending that, it kind of brought a lump to my throat, because I know that some students feel that there's a stigma, and they don't want to become involved at all with that. So I really appreciate you bridging that gap. And I also wanted to bring up two dates. I also want to thank Marty Samuel, who's really brought the Board of Realtors in and given enormous contributions to our, to our Veterans Memorial, and thank you for doing that, and thank you for heading the fundraising campaign. I just want to mention two dates are coming up that you didn't mention. One is, there is, they're having the Chili Bowl, which is fundraising for the, for the Veterans Memorial, and that date was changed to Thursday, November 19th, so I hope everyone has the new date, at 4:00. And I hope you're all to come to raise money for the, for the Veterans Memorial. And one other thing, the Veterans Resource Fair is November 17th from 11:00 to 3:00. So if any veterans out there are watching the program and would like to attend, it looks like a wonderful fair. And sorry to interrupt in the middle of the program. Thank you.
Daryl.
Thank you. My name is Daryl Cox, and I'm the Director of Financial Aid, Veteran Affairs, and Scholarships at Irvine Valley College, and I want to thank you for allowing me to share with you our veterans program. Little egg on my face, we've got a typo on the first slide. I'm terribly embarrassed. It was, no excuses. Moving right along. I want to thank my vice president, Student Services, Gwen Plano, and my president for helping me out with this as well. Ladies and gentlemen, the first slide.
Daryl, you may not know this, but Glenn's softball team, the college had three L's in it, so I think we're doing all right.
That's comforting. Thank you.
Average is out.
That's comforting. That's comforting. Ladies and gentlemen, the first slide has, the middle section there is a sample of some of the plaque work that will be included on the Veterans Clock Tower at Irvine Valley College. And yes, the Clock Tower will be completed soon, I hope. It's an ongoing project, and with your help, we will complete that. The bottom line there is the three logos of Saddleback, Irvine Valley College, and ATEP. I believe personally that the South Orange County Community College District has the potential to be the crown jewel of veteran services in the state of California. And I look forward to working collaboratively with Saddleback and ATEP as we move forward with veteran services. It's going to take good work, hard work, and we have the potential to be the crown jewel. Thank you. Our veterans population is also growing, as the slide indicates, a 47% increase in a short three years. The VA estimates that about 200,000 troops would be out-processed this year. 20% of those will return with physical or mental issues. The number-one reason given by vets in terms of why they joined was for the educational benefits. The number-two reason was for the health care benefits for their families. IVC was prepared to handle about a 3% growth in the veterans' population. That's put tremendous stress on our resources. We've adapted by moving people in the financial aid office over to the veteran side, and we are also working with our Veterans Work/Study population to help out with that. Our response, the best thing that we can do for veterans on the campuses is get their benefit packages processed, and we do that very well. We have veterans coming to us from other institutions to have their benefits processed. We're proud of that. We work with the Berzer's Office and get deferrals in place for these veterans. We work with the A&amp;R to ensure that the vets get priority registration slots, as well as residency issues resolved. Counseling works well with us in terms of the veterans' academic plans are the most detailed plans a student can have, and our counseling office works very well in preparing those academics' plans so that we can submit to the VA for those benefits. The Veterans Club is engaging campus and Club Day and other veterans' programs as well. Direct assistance to the vets themselves. The counselors, again, writing those academic plans is very helpful. We are, at Irvine Valley, a member of the Service Opportunity Colleges Consortium. This group of colleges nationwide ensures that the veterans receive transfer credit for the units that they've completed at other institutions. They reduce the academic residency requirement, and they ensure credit for the training that they received in the military. In this way, the veteran can move from station to station, duty to duty, continue to take classes online, and ensure that they are making academic progress towards that one final degree. Campus awareness is also promoted via the Vets Club, which has put together study groups. They have a cellphone for the troops. They're collecting old cellphones. The cellphones are dismantled for parts. The money generated from that comes back to them in the form of calling cards, which are then sent to the troops overseas. The Clock Tower, the Children's Center, and the Recycling Center are other components on campus that the Veterans Club has embraced. Our outreach project is with the Los Alamos Naval Air Station. The Joint Forces Training Base has been converted to an out-processing station. It will be the largest out-processing station on the West Coast. They are looking at about 150,000 vets a year moving through that institution. We are there. We are there with our veterans' information about IVC. We are there with educational benefit information. We are first contact for them, and our Vets Club plays an important role in that. Job fairs, we participate in that with the Joint Forces Training Base as well. Our five-year plan for veterans is to, excuse me, I lost my place. Continue servicing the vets to the best of our ability. We cannot, as an institution, I believe, service the vets on the backside if we're not willing to accommodate the service organizations on the front side. And by that, I mean the recruiters, bringing them on campus and helping them meet their goals and explaining to the student population that national service is an alternative and an option for them. Military currently offers $65,000 in loan forgiveness. In today's economic environment, students graduating with anywhere from $14,000 to $27,000 in loan debt from the community colleges, looking at job prospects that pay about $13 an hour, military service is an option worth considering for relief of those student-loan debts. In my personal opinion, I believe there's room for national service, not only in the form of military service, but Vista, Peace Corps, Job Corps, police, hospital, and teaching all deserve roles in this loan forgiveness program, and I hope that the feds move forward with that. Currently, the veteran can receive anywhere from $1,223 a month to $2,271 a month. That in itself is helpful, but it doesn't pay the bills, and one cannot live on it. We need to find ways to generate more veteran scholarships and more campus resources dedicated to the families of the veterans themselves, and we are doing that. We're looking at adopting a unit and bringing troops into our homes for Christmas and Thanksgiving, those types of things. In your packets is basically the veterans' outreach material that the veterans produce, that's Veterans Helping Veterans. Contact information, admissions and records applications are in there as well. There's also information about the Veterans Clock Tower, the copy of this PowerPoint presentation, a list of our five-year goals, and there's also a CD in there that I forwarded to Dr. Mather earlier, and he shared with some of your board members. I encourage you to review that film. It's a 15-minute film produced by University of Southern California Film Students. It captures the essence of the veterans' experience as a student. I encourage you to give that a look. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll entertain any questions or comments that you might have at this time.
Thank you. Question from the trustees. Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you, all of you, for a fine presentation, informing all of us on the board about the veterans' programs. I certainly, for one, you know, wasn't aware of everything that was going on here, so this was an eye-opener for me. I had some other questions. I think if I go through some of those materials, I'll probably find some answers to that. But one question that I do have is, you've indicated that you want our district to have the crown jewel of veterans' programs. And surveying the landscape, who's our competition out there? Who else is, has very robust veterans' programs that would be a model, maybe are doing things that we're not doing?
The literature that I've been reading is suggesting that all institutions are moving very quickly in the direction of veteran services. It's a very hot topic right now. Some are doing more than others, some are prepared to do more than others, some have resources to do better than others. We are looking at all of those. There are some best practices out there, large institutions, small institutions. At the end of the day, it gets down to one student and one file, and what can we do to facilitate that and get that student taken care of? That's really the call. It's one student at a time, doing the best that you can at taking their concerns and applying it to the larger group. There are, I can't give you a name of an institution, perhaps, Terrence, you have a?
Actually, if I could, if I could add to this, we actually have, Loma Hopkins, one of our DSPS counselors, is taking a one-semester sabbatical and researching best practices in this field. She's going to come back and present all of this information, and we're actually setting up a veterans' panel to run an in-service, a flex week in-service program to kind of help out the faculty and let them know what's going on. But she traveled out to the state of Minnesota, where each campus in the state of Minnesota has a Vet Center, basically like a vet's house, similar to what Saddleback's doing. And it's more of an ownership of space, and similar to, you know, our memorial, it shows that you're a veterans-friendly campus and that you have a place for them. Give them ownership of that space. It's not necessarily about over and above services, it's more about the space and the welcoming in. So, just my feelings.
Yeah, just, you know, comeback comment, and that is, I think, I'm not sure that I'm speaking out of turn, but I think that you will find this, this board is extremely sensitive to veterans' issues, and I, for one, would encourage you to bring these folks back at some future point in time and to give us an update, perhaps after that survey is done, what kind of progress are we making, sort of use where we're at now as a benchmark for, and see what kind of improvements we can make in the program in the future.
Thank you. And just a quick note, the CD from the SC Film School has been distributed to all the board members. It's in their package. And if I don't miss my guess, the SC students are probably also responsible for misspelling "college." Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. That CD, that CD really is marvelous and extremely touching. I hope all our colleagues have the opportunity to watch it. It really is worth it. I congratulate you on the splendid presentations this evening, and I share in my enthusiasm as a member of this board for these programs on both campuses. I think that the role of veterans in the Orange County community, and especially in the South Orange County community, is something we must never forget. The veteran role is a part of the Orange County culture because of Camp Pendleton's long presence in our community, because of El Toro and the helicopter facility. The veteran community has provided leadership in Orange County for many years. Members of the Congress, members of the state legislature, members of the Board of Supervisors, mayors and city councilmen have always, in Orange County, been overwhelmingly represented by veterans. The people of Orange County esteem and appreciate the contribution of veterans and have chosen them, in many cases, to be our leaders. So I commend all of you on both campuses who are serving this new generation of veterans, and be assured of this trustee's support. Thank you.
Trustee Milchiker.
I echo what my fellow trustees have said. It's really an excellent presentation. I want to, actually, I know both of you, both veteran centers have links to the Saddleback College and the Irvine Valley College, on the Irvine Valley College website, but I wondered if you could discuss with the colleges if there's room on the webpage of each college to put a little, a small link to the Vet Center, at least for a little while, right after they open. And also, I know that I met Dean Nelson with one of the women veterans that has founded a Women's Veterans Support Group, and that Women's Veterans Support Group meets once a month on Wednesday, and this coming Wednesday at 4:00, it will be meeting. So I think it's important to get all of these services that we're offering out to the public, and I'm very delighted that you're meeting with the various, with Camp Pendleton and the various other sites where we might be able to advertise our services to the veterans, to make sure that the community knows of these services and this community is served if they would like to be served, and to know what we have to offer for them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dean Nelson, Mr. Belot, Mr. Cox, thank you very much on behalf of the colleges and for all you do for our servicemen and women. To wrap up, chancellor Mather.
Thank you, President Wagner. I would really like to thank Terrence Nelson and Daryl Cox and Tony for your outstanding presentation about what you do for the veterans on our presentation about what you do for the veterans on our college campuses. Members of the board, you can see that our colleges take this program very, very seriously and are committed to continue to enhance it. Veterans certainly have educational opportunities available to them as they return. It saddens me to say that a huge number of veterans, perhaps over a million, I remember seeing some big number of veterans nationally that are homeless. And I would sure hope that our federal government will take the appropriate steps to take care of the people who have served this nation so well. The film that Darrell had shared with me, I had sent that to all the members of the board, I'm glad you're providing it in the DVD form, and it's really outstanding. And Trustee Lang will be happy to bring back this kind of presentation to the board in the future so that you can get further progress support on it. And finally, I'd like to ask members of the board that through your contacts in the communities, as you find appropriate, to pass on the word to appropriate community organizations and clubs, to invite these three gentlemen who have done the presentations to talk about the veterans' programs and services that we offer on our college campuses. This will be a wonderful opportunity to get the good word out in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. We are at the consent calendar. Let me inquire of my colleagues, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Trustee Padberg.
5.2, please.
Thank you. 5.2. Any others? 5.2, any others? Trustee Lang.
517, just for purposes of...
All right.
Move the balance.
Second.
Moving seconded, let's go ahead and vote. Trustee Jay, please. Thank you, sir. All right, the balance carries unanimously. Item 5.2, pulled by Trustee Padberg, this is the 2010 Revised Fees for Saddleback College.
Yes, I just want...
Let me entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
All right, move in seconded. For discussion purposes, Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I intend to support this. However, in light of the economy and our struggling students, I am concerned to see fees go up. I will recognize that many of the fees are actually eliminated and some have actually gone down, so perhaps it balances out. But I would like to see if our deans or our president would like to comment on the ones that have gone up, and is it really, really essential? Our students are struggling just to go to community college, so if you could comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Well, this is a Saddleback item, so...
Yeah, President.
President Burnett?
Well, Trustee Padberg, I certainly don't know the actual details in each of these. I might ask my vice president, do you know about the fees here? I don't want to speculate, even though most of these are arts and materials fees, so I think, and I've already heard that there have been increases, and there's slight increases for many of these material fees, that's all.
Right. And I recognize that many are completely eliminated and some have actually gone down, so perhaps, again, it balances out. But I just want to express my concern publicly about any fees that go up in today's economy.
And we would agree with you. Thank you.
As a typical matter, don't fee, when these fees get charged, aren't they just passing along the cost of the material? These are not independent profit centers, correct?
That's exactly my understa... Oh, certainly not a profit center, no.
Okay. All right. Trustee Lang.
And again, I think, as you've mentioned, President Burnett, looking through the various ones, I think the one program probably that's maybe really been most affected by the fee increases seems to be the nursing program. The others, in which there are some materials cost increases, most of the other ones appear to be elective type of courses, emeritus-type courses, et cetera. And I guess I don't have as much angst about raising fees in those categories.
And I believe Vice President Telson has a comment.
In terms of these fees, the choice becomes difficult because in order to do most of the classes, as you can see, they're attached to classes, you're either going to take from the general fund to pay for something that actually the student who took that class should actually be paying for, just like they would a textbook. It's sort of the cost of doing business. So, I think it's more just to expect the student who takes a specific class where, like, where you have to get food supplies, food, where you have to get the equipment for art, than it is to take the taxpayers' money that's in general providing a general education. So, it's always, it's very difficult, but it is one of the decisions we made.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously, 517. For purposes of Trustee Lang abstaining, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Trustee Lang.
Yes, the item that I'm... The item that I'm sustaining on is the, perhaps that you could remove and vote separately on, would be the item for Hall and Foreman, the consultant agreement for that. So, my motion would be to separate that out from the rest of the motion.
Second.
All right, let's vote on balance. And the balance carries unanimously, and there is one that has been removed, and we will vote separately on that one. Trustee Milchik. And Trustee Lang, stains carries unanimously. Very good. We are at item 6.1, this is the contract with NUDISIC for software development.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Moved in seconded, discussion? Trustee Milchik. I'm sorry, Trustee Lang first, I apologize.
Yes. Just wanted, I guess I wanted some clarification. We were doing some fairly unique work, as I recall, with NUDISIC in developing different kinds of proprietary systems. Is that what this is, or were those some of the items on the consent calendar? I'm just confused with all the different IT projects, and maybe somebody can help me out here, either Vice Chancellor Bermuda, or perhaps...
I could take a stab at it, but since our manager of the year stuck around for just this opportunity, I'm going to call on Jim Gaston.
I'm actually really glad you asked the question because we're very excited about this project. The other contracts we brought forward to you, and just for clarification too, this project has already been funded in the Basic Aid Initiative that you already approved for us for this coming year. So, this is just the contract to carry out that work. So, the prior contracts were for the core functionality of CISS and for the support and maintenance and finishing that out. We think with CISS, we've built something really good, but we're not shooting for really good, we're shooting for really great. And this project, we're very excited about, it's really taking our online services to another level. The difficult part is trying to describe it in a short sentence, but at its core, what we're doing is we're taking our services to students and making them much more proactive. For instance, MAP is a great service, but the student needs to know about MAP. They need to come to MAP with an idea of what they want to do. We want to turn that around and actually make recommendations to students, similar to what you get with Amazon, Netflix, any of these services. The best example of it is in online registration, when they enter the ticket number for a class, if that class is full. Right now, our system just sits there and waits for them to go do all the work to find a replacement class. Instead, we want a box to pop up and say, "We're sorry, that class is full, would you like some assistance finding a similar class? What was it about that class you liked? Was it the professor, the day and time it met, the course, the transfer certification?" And then we'll go search the class schedule, find ones that meet your criteria that have empty seats and then don't conflict with your current schedule. So, it's really kind of taking what we've done in the core of CISS and putting some really innovative services on top of it.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you for that background information, but I was also, I also recall from a previous meeting discussion that we were really creating a system, an outside system, that would, I thought, be some sort of a profit center, basically, for our district. Is this that system or part of that system? Help me out on that understanding.
Well, and those discussions are ongoing. We're having discussions with several software companies about taking MAP and turning it into a product that other colleges might purchase from us. This is one that we're just working on right now. It's, we haven't even really started working on it, it's a concept and idea right now. I have no doubt, though, given the interest in MAP, that Sherpa would even generate even higher level of interest. So, I have no doubt that the investment we're making in this now, I would be surprised if we didn't wind up bringing some of that back into the district.
Thank you. Trustee Milchik.
I just wanted another opportunity to congratulate our outstanding manager of the year, Jim Gaston, who always takes subjects of complete complexity and makes them simple enough for us all to understand, and with great humor and grace also, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
I noticed that you're using, you're revamping the MySite portal, which is actually extraordinary. And also, it said it'll be working with students' mobile phones, and I just wanted to clarify what you mean by that.
Well, what we're seeing is, every time I walk across the campus, I look at what our students are doing. And until recently, what I saw mostly was text-based cellphones. Last six months to a year, I've seen far more usage of more sophisticated phones, iPhones, BlackBerrys and the like. And the movement toward a mobile computing platform is really clear. Right now, you can access MySite on your mobile phone, but it's just not very easy to use, you have to scroll around a lot. So, we want to be able to leverage some of the technology that's available now and make those kinds of services directly available to students right on their phones.
I see what you mean. For instance, Spanish Dictionary website, SpanishDick.com, they have a mobile site that's small and you could actually use it on your BlackBerry. So, I guess we would make MySite smaller and concise, maybe the mobile version that connects...
Exactly. We would have a mobile version of MySite. We also want to leverage students' use of social networking sites, such as Facebook. We'd love for students to be able to log into Facebook and have recommendations coming from Sherpa on courses that they might take. Or maybe they've got a deadline that's showing up, or we could remind faculty that their grades are due, or managers that they have evaluations for employees that are due. There's any number of things that we could do. What we're going to do is build an architecture that we can build upon and really leverage some of these great ideas.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on the item. And the matter carries unanimously. Item 6.2, Board Policy Revisions, this is here for discussion and/or approval.
Move approval.
Moved in seconded. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I was just interested in 5320, to get some background information about that policy and, can anybody help me out with that?
Go ahead.
This is a policy that was recommended to us by the Community College League of California and as being one that's required by accreditation standards. So, it's making statements in here about participation and responsibilities in accreditation of, at a high level. And that's all it is, is to have a board statement about that.
I think this is the Academic Renewal 5320, is that the one?
Oh, I was looking at 5520.
5320 Academic Renewal.
Ah. It was a nice explanation.
It even sort of made sense.
Well, if it made sense, you might go with it. I need help from my academic colleagues on this one.
It would appear to come out of Title V, Section 55044, but that's just a guess.
No, that's a good guess.
Thank you. It's statutory, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's required by...
Anyone else want to help him? I'm trying here.
It's required by statute.
Which statute?
It's Title V, 55044.
All right. Let me turn to the vice presidents.
It's the policy that gives the students an opportunity to wipe out a whole semester of bad work. You cannot pick and choose the courses you want to remove from your transcript, but you can have a whole semester wiped out. And you can only do it if you've been at the college for a certain period of time, and if in the semester during which you are requesting that academic renewal, you are taking a certain number of units at the college.
Further questions or follow-up?
Yes.
So, you can only choose to wipe out an entire semester, non-individual course?
Yes.
So, the good goes out with the bad?
The good goes out with the bad. You cannot just say, "I didn't do well in my English 1A, just remove that English 1A, but keep my math where I had an A+." You have to take the whole semester out.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Milchik.
I have several questions. This is under the Academic Renewal Board Policy. I think the accreditation one is pretty evident that it's, you know, an important policy to have. Does this mean that any of the coursework and any of the material, any of the information will not appear on the student's transcript when they wipe out a whole semester, that it will be just wiped off?
Yes, it is wiped out, but there is something called permanent record. The information stays in the system, it's just that there is a notation saying that this semester is wiped out.
Is that a new statewide policy or...
No, it's not new. There's some more regulations about the amount of time you have to be in residence at your college before you do that. And one of the things that is so valuable for that is, for instance, somebody starts and would get sick or ill or had a mental problem, or many reasons. And so, we're noticing that many of the transfer universities and colleges will allow a student who did academic renewal, because his grades didn't count, they can now get in and they can now transfer. So, it's one of the more positive things we've done. It is not done simply. You have to petition for it, and you have to have proven that you're beyond whatever happened at that point and you have good grades.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion or questions? All right, let's vote on both items. And they both carry unanimously. Item 6.3, this is here for review and study only. Moved in seconded and discussion. All right, seeing no discussion, we'll vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.4, Academic Personnel Action Items, here for approval.
Move.
Moved in seconded, discussion?
No changes.
There are no changes, so let's vote. And that carries unanimously. Item 6.5, Classified Personnel Action Items, also no changes, moved in seconded, discussion? Let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.6, the Faculty Hiring List, moved in seconded, discussion? Trustee Lang.
Yes, my question is, the colleges have prioritized different positions. I'm presuming that not all of those positions will be funded, and I'm interested in finding out how many of those positions are likely to be funded.
All right, if the chancellor can help us.
Thank you. First of all, as usual, both college administrations and their academic senators have worked together in developing this list. The number of positions to be filled, first of all, depends upon a major criteria, and that is that we want to be in compliance with the 50% law. Even though there's talk of waivers and so forth, considering the tough economic conditions in this state, but sooner or later, we will be expected to be in compliance and since we are, even though we are above 50%, we are not in 60 or 70%, so we do need to keep an eye on this. Secondly, the number of faculty members, new faculty members we hire also depends upon the retirements. And there's always a little tricky because faculty members have choice until towards the end of the year sometimes as to how many, well, how many of them are going to retire or to make their decisions. Another factor that goes into decision-making is the full-time faculty obligation that we get from the state chancellor's office. And even though, again, there's talk of waivers on that issue because of the tough economic conditions, my sentiment is that sooner or later, we will be expected to abide by the full-time faculty obligation. So, I'm trying to point out several factors that go into the decision-making of how many full-time faculty we will hire. Very likely, we will not hire all the ones that you see on the list of each college, but they have developed, they generally develop a good list, an external list, an exhaustive list, so that when it comes to making a decision as to how many faculty members we hire on the respective... on their respective campus, we have enough to decide where to draw the line, depending upon what the obligation is supposed to be for the district as a whole. Please bear in mind that the full-time faculty obligation, or when it comes to 50% law compliance, is based on a district-wide number, not on a college-based number. Certainly, we have to work with both the colleges to make sure that we stay on the good side. One last point that I would also like to mention, that goes into the calculation, is when we talk about 50% law, we're also talking about the expenditures of dollars on faculty salaries and benefits. So in the last round of negotiations, we did the best we could as a district in resolving negotiations with the faculty in terms of salary increase, and considering the tough budgetary times, that factor also has to be kept in mind in determining how many full-time faculty members we'll hire. So we cannot give you a definitive number today, but we have enough to draw from as we look through the crystal ball and try to decide as to how many we will hire.
Having said all that, I'm wondering if anybody has an educated, yes, I mean, I look at the lists, and I note with some interest that Saddleback basically has their first eight replacement positions, so I would anticipate that those are ones that they would definitely want to fill.
I can definitely tell you we'll be hiring, plan to hire, all replacement faculty.
Okay, but on the other hand, on IVC's list, the priority of the replacement positions is quite a bit different. That extends all the way down to the 21st priority number, with seven of those being replacement positions. Any comment?
Reason for that?
Yes, our process is actually quite different, and a, excuse me, a replacement position is not necessarily an automatic replacement. It goes through certain targets that are formulaic to select which ones will go forward.
Trustee Milczek.
I just wondered, I noticed item number two on the Irvine Valley College faculty hiring list is a paralegal study. Professor, does this mean that Irvine Valley College is going to open a paralegal program at Irvine Valley College?
Yes, it is heading in that direction.
Well, I know that, from my understanding, the only other paralegal program in Orange County is Santa Ana College, so I think that's a wise decision, because a lot of people are interested in going into this field now. They say, "Kill all the lawyers," but we need to produce more lawyers, right? Okay, thank you so much. I think Shakespeare said that.
Trustee Lang, to attempt to answer your question after pointing out all of those factors--
Thank you.
Since you're looking for an estimate--
Just an educated guess.
An educated guess. I would say, all in all, including the replacement positions that you just heard about, I'm guestimating here, that about 20 to 25 faculty positions--
Overall.
Overall, for the next year.
And I will note for the record, Trustee Milczek, that Shakespeare put that line in the mouth of an anarchist, and in context, it's a vote for lawyers, but that gets lost in the shuffle. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.7, Classified Employee Layoff, here for approval.
Move approval, and it's noted it's a resolution, you need a roll call.
And moved and seconded, discussion of the item? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you would call the roll, please.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milczek.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
All right, thank you all. Item 7.1 is an information item. Questions or comments? All right, 7.2, also information. 7.3, Trustee Lang.
Yes, just harkening back to my opening comments, I think it's worthwhile pointing out the drop in basic aid receipts that has occurred from the 08, 09 fiscal year, which I see to be some about $17.3 million, and, you know, I find that obviously a bit shocking, if you will, that basic aid is expected to drop so much for this coming fiscal year. I mean, I'm not totally surprised, because we all know what's happening with reassessments, et cetera, but nevertheless, you know, obviously, it's a huge impact for us.
Further discussion? Thank you. 7.4, the Facilities Plan Status Report. 7.5, an information item here regarding salaries.
Mr. President, thank you. I just want to say thank you for bringing this to the Board. This was a request of mine, and it was prompted by a study offered in the Orange County Register newspaper. I have, for years, been intrigued by conversations with colleagues of mine in higher education in the private sector, and in particular, folks from the Cal-State system. I've not, I must confess, discussed with Cal-State Fullerton, but I have had a number of discussions with professors from Cal, other Cal-State campuses, and the UC Riverside community as well, and they've always been surprised at the level of compensation offered by the South Orange County Community College District in comparison to what they earn, and I see here in this study, an example of that. The information is not adequate, I mean, isn't totally complete, because some of the institutions, I guess, don't reveal all these numbers on the same comparative basis, but for instance, we have, the one that is most striking to me is that the four-year Cal-State Fullerton Institution, which is our neighbor and colleague, they show a professor at $96,600, and the South Orange County Community College District shows a professor at $102,000, and then other institutions in the four-year range are rather all over the map, but I think it's very informative, it's interesting to know, because oftentimes, our scheduling of hiring and recruitment is pressed due to supposed long lists or short lists of available applicants, and I think it's good for us to see what other institutions are offering. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I guess what I'm, I'm not sure how we compiled this list, but I would like to know, and actually, I was, you know, I guess, pleased or surprised to see that our salaries actually were very comparable, I thought, across the board, at least certainly with our peer institutions, for the information that we had. The only thing I couldn't draw from this was whether, in fact, we were actually comparing apples to apples here, and I'm assuming that these figures really are base salary, do not include whatever package of benefits would be involved. Is that correct?
Yes, the best figure to look at in this case is actually the column called "All," because I couldn't compare the other Orange County Community College to us and the professors, yet I should get involved in contract language to do that. So the "all" actually is not an average, what that is is actually, once you add up all the faculty and divide the number of faculty by the salary, that's actually a true figure. So that's probably the best comparison in Orange County community colleges. The benefits were not included, because they were not included in the original OC register document, and trying to get the detail, because you'll notice, I included a large amount of detail on a national basis as well, so, and those are base salary. Every college and university will have an opportunity to earn additional opportunities for classes such as overload, or stipends, and so on, like we have as well, but these are base salaries without consideration of benefits or other opportunities for funding.
And obviously, they're also average salaries, so that, you know, we're picking up both the high end of the spectrum and the low end of the spectrum, so everything, you know, tends to get averaged out. So, okay.
Trustee Milczek.
My question is, under the South Orange County Community College District, I'm somewhat puzzled, that we have listed professor, associate professor, and assistant professor. What is an associate professor or an assistant professor at our district?
In our district, it's a matter of tenure and a number of years past tenure. So I went through and had to go through in the contract and find out the average base salary at that number of years of experience to do that.
So what is an associate professor, then? How many years does an associate professor have to be at our district?
We hire them as associate professors.
So we hire someone as associate professor, and when do they become an assistant professor?
At the end of tenure.
Oh, and they get tenures for four years after they were hired. Okay, thank you so much.
Trustee Jay.
Yes, I think that these figures, and I'm not criticizing those who put them together at all, but the load is so different in a research institution like UC Irvine, or private nonprofit doctoral institutes, institutions, compared to the community colleges. The standard load in a community college is around 15, we call them LHEs, and in many of the state colleges, a full load is nine units, and if there is some release because of somebody holds a chair or something, sometimes it's six units. I have a friend in the economics department at UC Irvine, and he was griping because two of the three-quarters, of course, it's a research institution, I recognize that, two of the three-quarters there at Irvine, he was assigned a class, one class. So the load is so hugely different that to compare four-year institutions with community colleges is really a non sequitur, almost, you know. To dig into this would be a huge project, really, because so frequently, those loads in the four-year institutions particularly, deal with a professor of note, who has personally negotiated with the president, or the academic dean, or somebody, to determine what their salary will be, what their placement will be, and so forth. Now also, at the four-year institutions, the doctoral granting institutions, research institutions, some of them, my son spent ten years working at the University of Chicago. As I recall, he told me that there were six different levels of full professor at Chicago. He's at Stanford now, and I don't know what the, but I'll call him and find out what the situation is now, but I wouldn't be surprised to see the same type of delineation at Stanford. The interesting thing is that these chairs that full-time professors are granted sometimes are huge. I mean, maybe they're $250,000, $275,000, $300,000 on top of wherever he is on the full professor multiple-step salary schedule, so it's an interesting study and a very difficult one, but these are good figures. I'm glad to see, in Orange County, I guess it was, who commented on it, I don't know, but of the, all of our professors together, all four levels, here are averaged 92, and there's only one district that's lower than us in the, in the Orange County area, and that's, of course, Rancho Santiago. But thanks for the study, and it's edifying, it truly is.
And Professor Hagerty, I saw you wanted to jump in.
Thank you, President Wagner. Trustee Jay made most of the points I wanted to make about this, really not apples and apples, we are comparing different things, and I would just add, too, that even the number of students that we as faculty teach here at Saddleback is tremendously larger than the number of students that a faculty member, a professor, would have to teach at a four-year institution. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right, item 7.6 is an information item. 7.7, the Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.8, information regarding the Retiree Trust Fund. And we are to item 8, which are the reports, and we will start with President Burnett.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. President. First, I wanted to bring up a point that Trustee Padberg brought up, and she highlighted that Professor Larry Perez's wonderful gift of his winnings of $10,000. I also wanted to add that he did it on the Osher Scholarship Program, which is a matching of 100%, so it's actually a $20,000 donation, so he did double good. First, I wanted to, congratulations to IVC for their wonderful dedication of their new Business Sciences Building. It truly is a remarkable building and a wonderful thing to have, so congratulations to all of you. Of course, I think our Mr. President over there from the Board already announced it, our gala is coming up, and I really would implore anybody who has not done so yet to please purchase a ticket, and if you know of anybody else to come. As you know, this is our Board's One Fundraiser of the Year for operational funds, as well as for students' scholarships. Number two is, tomorrow night is our Family Night. I left some information on your desks, we're looking forward to that, it's at 6:00 PM here. Last week, we were very thrilled to have, you probably heard, a bestselling author and acclaimed leadership scholar, Jim Cusis, present a lecture in a nationally televised broadcast to more than 300 colleges and universities across the nation. He was standing right here in this room. It was truly a treat for all of us that have read many of his leadership books, and I know the Chancellor and I and many others that study organizational leadership, we're thrilled to see him. On October 14th, I was thrilled to sponsor our annual K-12 partnership breakfast. We had over 50 principals, superintendents, and school board members. Just last year, we started to expanding that annual breakfast to our K-12 partners, as opposed to just high schools, and it has been tremendously well-received by all of our K-12 partners. Homecoming is on October 10th. Thank you for the trustees that did show up, it was a wonderful event, and we were able to introduce our new mascot. We have a Gaucho mascot, so as soon as the college comes up with a new name for our Gaucho mascot, they're going through the process now, we'll bring him to the Board and introduce him to you. Finally, I did want to just update on an issue that the Board, in its wisdom, many months ago had brought up, and if you recall, it was regarding the mailing out of our schedules, class schedules each semester. I did want to tell you, Saddleback just did it for the first time for our spring semester coming up, and instead of mailing to hundreds of thousands of households with that very large schedule, not only saving money, of course, but saving our, the environment by not sending out all that paper, I should let you know that the response has actually been extremely positive from not only our households, our students, and all of our personnel. So just wanted to give you an update on, thank you for your very good suggestions in that.
Thank you. President Rockland.
Thank you very much. The Casino Night was a grand success, and I wanted to mention that that was a brainchild of David Robinson, and he pushed our foundation to try to do something a little bit better, and we rose to the occasion, and I think he was very happy with the way that that came out. I would like to thank President Wagner and Trustee Fuentes for attending that. You also saw Dave's work in that video tonight. That was a PowerPoint at one time, much tailored down, that I would take on the road in public speaking. Dave saw that and saw that it could be done quite a bit better, so combining his own passion that he has grown about the college and the district, added that, as well as his expertise in technology. So the technology that you saw there, this is a YouTube presentation that he has put together. He actually has an iPhone where he can log on to that video in a matter of a couple of seconds and show it to whoever he happens to be visiting with. So we deeply appreciate the work that he's been doing for our foundation. The dedication of the Business Science and Technology Innovation Center, I think, came out quite well. Great debt of gratitude for our emcee, Trustee Tom Fuentes, fine style, as usual, we appreciate it deeply. We also had invocation from Trustee Padberg, wonderful words on behalf of the Board from President Wagner, as well as Chancellor providing some comments on the district there as well, and we appreciate Trustee Milczek-- as well, and we appreciate Trustee Milchiker for your supporting us and being a part of that. I think it went beautifully, but it's hard to tell you how much this building has meant to our students in the community. There's a very obvious impact there that is very, very positive for us. And on behalf of the college, again, thank all of you, again, for supporting that.
Thank you. Provost Peoples.
Thank you, President Wagner. I continue to attend the weekly ATAP Development Team meetings led by Deputy Chancellor Gary Portner and our district consultants, and I am pleased to report that we continue to make significant progress on the development for ATAP. Meetings have been held and continue to be set up with our new Dean, Rocco Sifoni, with the college faculty and staff at both campuses to facilitate development and potential expansion of future programs. Work is also continuing nicely to match and align these programs of the future with potential grants, working, again, with both of the college's staff and doing that. ATAP staff also fully participated recently in the Great Southern California Shakeout to practice evacuation procedures and emergency preparedness planning. We did that in conjunction with Saddleback College and IVC, and I thought it was very well-coordinated, and the staff and the students, I think, got a great benefit from that. Our ATAP staff attended also the Orange County Business Council Annual Workforce Development Conference on October 15th, where we all received the new annual report, which will probably be out to the public and probably copies to us in the near future. A group of administrators and faculty toured recently this month, Sunset Gower Studios as guests of Hudson Capital, actually, it was on October 8th. And it was, I was very interested to talk with and learn more about potential jobs in these industries by talking to the staff and technicians at the, at the studios. We also visited Laguna College of Art and Design and talked to the dean there about potential future partnerships. And lastly, just wanted to mention that I'm also attending routinely the IVC Accreditation Steering Committee, but also now expanded to, attends as visitor, excuse me, attends as visitor to the Saddleback College Steering Committee for Accreditation, and also to visit as, as a visitor to the Standard Two Committee, so that ATAP can be involved to the degree that we can discuss ATAP contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. IVC Senate, President Allen.
Thank you.
It's not as easy as it looks down there, is it?
To my left and to my right, please. Thank you for the opportunity to report to the board this evening on behalf of the IVC Academic Senate, and I have three items to report. First, the Academic Senate is going green at IVC in support of our other environmental initiatives that are taking place across the campus. The bulk of our hard copy output for our meetings, documents such as agendas, minutes, have been transferred to a digital format for distribution, and all of our council meetings are now paperless. Instead, we're making use of the available projection systems to complete our work. Secondly, the faculty members in their respective schools at this point are developing the necessary hiring committees in anticipation of the board's decisions and approvals this evening. And then finally, the IVC faculty continues to be directly involved in student learning outcome development and assessment, and accreditation self-study, and then, of course, as always, in the college-wide strategic planning of our campus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback Senate, Professor Cosgrove.
Thank you, President Wagner. Two points. One is a clarification, so that it's maybe more easily understood, that when we have replacement for faculty, it simply means that someone has left that division. And in order to have an integrity to individual divisions and departments, rather than have that money leave the division, the faculty and administration agreed a number of years ago to keep the money in that particular division, the position may not be replaced exactly with the one that was vacated. The division will determine whether or not that replacement is to be like that, or to be something that the division simply is moving toward in an area where students are going to be interested or their opportunities. So keyboarding, which was 10 years ago, a hot item, you know, students don't need keyboarding anymore, so it's not an area we replace. The second point is, we have just started our Department Chair Survey, which will, the results will be out early November, but we need to poll the 50-some department chairs to get a better sense of what they are contributing to their departments and their divisions, and also to see that the responsibilities that have been growing, partly by state mandates, SLOs are not something we asked for, AUOs were not asked for, program review was not asked for, but these are mandates that we are straddled with, and usually, it falls to the department chairs. So their workload has increased in order to help their deans and the departments and the division itself. So when those results are available, I'll get them to you.
Thank you, sir. On behalf of the Faculty Association, Professor Hagerty.
Thank you again, President Wagner. First thing I'd like to report is, last weekend, I was in attendance with a number of, somewhere around 800 other faculty members, K through 16, as part of the State Council, and I mentioned to you previously, the State Council is the policymaking body for K through 16 educators throughout the state of California. I stood, I was there representing our chapter, as well as the other chapters were there, and as I said, some 800 teachers throughout the state. Also, I'd just like to point out that the Faculty Association here at Saddleback College has decided to send me to the gala, so I will be in attendance representing the Faculty Association at that event. And then finally, the thing that we are here to do is to teach class, and I just want to just mention to the board that we are in the 10th week of instruction, with holidays coming up in November, within a little over a month, we actually will be in the final exam. This semester's going by very, very quickly, and I think we've done a good job as far as faculty throughout in both colleges, as far as taking care of the needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
May I take a personal moment? I want to share with you that a week ago, I had the privilege of sharing informal casual lunch with a student, and I'm not going to name the student, it might embarrass him. But I asked him, in the, in the course of our conversation, this student attends both our district and takes classes at Cal State Fullerton, and I think is kind of along the line of a junior, if I, if I'm not mistaken, maybe we're taking classes in our district and at Cal State Fullerton. And I asked him about his experience, and I asked him to tell me about great teachers that he'd experienced while under our roof. And the name that first came to mind, and that he had the most outstanding things to say about, was Professor Lee Hagerty. And Lee, I was terribly impressed by that sort of thing.
Thank you. Professor Taylor. Professor, President Taylor. Hey, look on the bright side, at least I didn't call you a lawyer.
Good. So two weeks ago, we wrapped up our homecoming event, a lot of work went into it, and we were really proud of the outcome. And now we're working on our fall events, like our Turkey Drive, which is going to provide food to make Thanksgiving dinner for around 20 or a little bit over 20 families who actually attend Saddleback College, so they're families of our community. And this Thursday, we'll be holding a large fall fair with all our campus clubs, so all of them are going to be on campus, going to be promoting, promoting their clubs with games, and it's kind of fall-themed, Thanksgiving-themed. And in our efforts to go green, we have actually convinced the bookstore, once they run out of blue books, to only carry green books, which are exactly like the blue books, except they're made of recycled material. So it'll lessen our carbon footprint, which is really exciting. And also, thanks to the foundation, we just received a $5,000 grant for our book loan program. So we will be working on providing new titles to go into our reserves in the library, as well as putting more titles in of the most popular books that the students check out.
Thank you. And on behalf of CSCA, Stixson.
Hello.
Hello.
Our CSE President, Shiana, is out sick, so I'm representing CSCA tonight. Glad to be here, be back. We are in the, in our election process currently. We have just, this month, had a process at Saddleback College for our monthly meeting, and next month, at IVC, where anyone can nominate, you know, we're getting ready, our, our officers are new in January. And then if there are any new prospective candidates, we will vote in December and be ready for the new year in January. Other than that, I'd just like to say that the classified employees of the South Orange County Community College District are doing a very good job, and I know that our board and our chancellor recognize that, and thank you. So I guess I'm talking to the community. Thanks.
Thank you, and you are right. Thank you to your employees. Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you, President Wagner. The classified staff at Saddleback College are continuing diligently to work with the faculty, the administration, on all the different standards for the accreditation, and we found that our acceptance into these type of proceedings has been very gracious and very warm, and we want to thank the faculty, the administration, the trustees, and everybody involved for that opportunity, and we look forward to continuing this great partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mahaney.
Good evening. Our Classified Senate at IVC has been very, very busy. We continue going and participating throughout the school with the tax forces, the accreditation. We also had Wendy Gabriella attend our previous meeting to give us a review on the planning and decision-making at IVC, and kind of the starting of reaching out with communication with our administrators and with our vice presidents and presidents. So we are committed this year to really build the bridge of trust and communication for all, as all of us to continue being a team. Our Green Committee Alternative has participated at IVC last Friday in our very first workshop in sustainability, and it was very well-attended, about 25 people, faculty, staff, the general public, even our president was there. So it was a great, great program and workshop to start our new green era at IVC. Our Bylaws Committee is also very busy revising our bylaws for this semester, and we are about to put it out for everybody to review it and give us their update. Staff Development Committee is also working in plenty of conferences around for staff, classified staff to attend, and the fundraising committee is ready for a big, big sale on Friday before Halloween, so we start collecting some money for scholarships. So we're being pretty busy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all, we stand adjourned.